What I'd like to do is just very briefly outline what the format of our hour together will be. Make a few opening remarks and then turn it over to Sean Collins. So I'll make a couple of just framing remarks for the presentation we're going to share with you. And then ask Sean to walk you through a discussion of the work that we have been up to, together as a team, over the last year, and then move to a period for questions and conversation with all of you. Before I jump into my framing comments, I would ask the seven of you that are here from Newport to share with your colleagues that this will be made available on video. Norm is faithfully videoing this and the other three campuses that we have held this conversation. And please do encourage them to watch the video, and if they have questions, please encourage them to bring them to Captain Collins. So the frame that I am really bringing to this meeting is the following. It's a two-part frame. The first is, when I came to the college just over a year and a half ago, it was my intention to learn as much as I could, really about every aspect of the college, but specifically around our work to ensure we were doing everything we can as a team to prepare for an emergency, to plan, and to ensure that we were doing everything that we possibly could to maintain the safety and security of our four campuses. And with that as really my goal, I brought together the people at the college that are responsible for that work. And we assessed that we in fact did have some work to do together. And if I were to encapsulate, I think, what that work really has been, it's first of all to make sure, is the team informed and aligned? Do we understand what kind of preparation, what kind of policies and procedures and protocol need to be first implemented and then followed? And second, are we working not only inside the college as a really tightly organized team, but are we working with our external partners? So really taking, as we must, a collective impact model to this work? So are we working with our city agencies, our state, and our national agencies so that we are ready in the event of any emergency? And what I'm happy to report is there has been enormous intention around this work. I'm very pleased with where we are at this point. And my goal today is really to just share with you where we are as an institution and where we will continue to go. So the first frame really is, there's been an enormous amount of attention and focus on this issue, and there will continue to be. The second frame, because I have Sean here with me today, so one element of safety and security. Sean is really going to be our go-to person. He right now is overseeing our police department. And it is simply this, the philosophy of community policing that really does lie at the heart of how we approach the work of our police officers at all four campuses. And so simply put, you know, what do we mean when we talk about community policing? It's that we are a community. We are a college, we are a place of learning, and we need to have a culture where our officers are genuinely engaged with the people that make up our community. So we want our officers to know youth. We want our officers to know our students. We want our officers to know the folks that are part of this, that are part of the college. And what I can say after a year and a half is that I don't think there's a day that's gone by that I haven't seen that philosophy put into practice. And I'm going to just share two stories that have happened over the last several weeks. And I have more. I could spend the rest of the hour just sort of sharing my own lived experience watching our officers. And in both cases, they didn't know. They didn't know that they were being observed. So the first is, now maybe three weeks ago, and this is the Warwick campus. I know what happens at all four. I came out of the academic affairs office and rounded the corner. And one of our officers was there, and the only way I can describe his body language, and I remember that I'm from India, was like hunting for bear. And I went over and said, "How are you? What's going on?" And for confidentiality purposes, I will not relate the specifics of the story, but what I can absolutely say is that he was on the fourth floor, I can only describe it as standing guard outside one of the wings of our classroom because there was an allegation that one of our students had been the victim of an assault. And so he was there and his goal, you know, he was ready to go right in there to make sure that that student was okay. And what I appreciated about it was, I'm not going to assume that that student and this officer had ever directly spoken, but the responsibility that that officer felt for one of our students, I could see it from 20 yards away, and then I experienced it firsthand. What he in the end did, exactly the right thing to do, was go down to our Director of the Studential Equity's office, speak with Elizabeth Canning, and connect that student to Elizabeth. So that's my first example of just, I see it every day. The second example is another one of our officers who I see all the time working with students. And in this case, he found me and said, "Listen, Megan, we have this enormously talented, promising student. She's brand new, really exceptional. She has significant physical disabilities. You just got to name her, she's remarkable." And a week later, he brought her up to my office. She comes to the Warwick campus with an aide. And what I loved about the exchange is, and I would say, I have a daughter who is in her first six weeks of college. And if anyone doesn't remember your first six weeks of college, I don't care who you are, they're brutal. So for this student, who is not just a first-year college student, but figuring out how to be a college student in a wheelchair, here's what I saw. I saw an officer who knew her name, who knew her aide's name, who knew what her classes were. And for me, the most inspiring part was not just that he knew her, but his focus was on her ability. So the conversation was around her bio class, her English class, her French class. So again, I spent the rest of the hour talking about what I experienced observing our officers do. That's my expectation of our police. It is my expectation that they are taking care of this community, and it's what I see without fail, and I'm incredibly proud to be a part of, in some way, that team and that work. So we're going to talk about the training that we have undergone. I'll speak to some aspects, Sean will speak to the others. We're going to talk to you briefly about some organizational changes, and then talk about improvements in college police. So when I get advanced with the next slide, you have something visual to locate your sort of seeing. I'll get to the training. What I want to now summarize about organizational challenges, or changes, pardon me, is the following. Dale Wetherall is retiring at the end of the year. Dale has been leading our police, has been a really devoted partner to this work. Dale is retiring at the end of this year and is currently out on medical leave. So Captain Collins, Sean Collins, has agreed to step in and be the interim Director of Campus Police. Has great support and a great partner in Tim Poulain, who as you may know oversees the Lincoln and Providence campuses. Tim has been with us at the other three campus presentations and had a family conflict today and couldn't join us. So we'll see how Sean does covering Tim's slides. It'll be a drive-on, and I know that Ken will let Tim know how it goes, big believers in feedback. So we are going to post the job for the new leader of campus police. And we'll look to convene that search and install a new director early next year. And in the meantime, Sean and I work very, very closely together. And Sean is reporting directly into Lisa Ogden, our Chief of Staff. So with that, the improvements in college police, I think that bullet likely came out of the Warwick team. And if I were to summarize, I would say, what I described to Sean, we all love all four campuses the same. I especially love walking into Newport and Lincoln. And the reason that that's true is because the campus police are right there. And when I think about this community policing philosophy, it's allowing them, I just watch, you know everybody's name, you sort of know what's happening. You have the pulse of what's happening in the building. And I think it creates, I just think it creates a different feel and a more positive feel. For those of you who know Warwick campus, our campus police are hidden down in the basement. So I can see them because I come in and out of that door a dozen times a day. But most of our community there doesn't. So we are, as part of the work renewal, which is our five-year significant state investment in that campus, we are taking a big part of Sean's office and moving it up and installing a kiosk analogous to what's here. Sean can answer, and Ken can answer more detailed questions about that project. But the idea is, we want our campus police visible. We want them easily accessible so that if someone, I don't know, has a, this is what I know happens every day, locked their keys in the car, flat tire, out of gas, can't find the car, lost the backpack, I can go on. They know quickly how to get to that central spot. So, and again, more detail, these guys can answer further questions. They will still retain that office on the ground, you know, the basement level in order to run sort of the back office part of the operations. But that's going to happen, and our goal, Ken McCabe, to have that up and running is... I'd love that. So you heard it here first. We will have it up and running by the end of this term. So it's thrilling. It will be right outside where the bookstore is currently located and where the beautiful new staircase that is going to be unveiled in the next 30 days will also be. There are really four basic categories that you'll see on the slide. Our emergency management, preparation, and training. The plan itself falls underneath that. Our work with a national consultant, Margulis and Healy. The training we are undergoing, and the various partnerships that we have formed. So let's go to the top. Emergency management. When I opened up my comments and I talked about our shared recognition that we really needed to locate the work we're doing as a college police department within the broader frame of what's happening in the city, in the state, and across the country. And that's really going to the FEMA model, working in close partnership with the training and resources that are there, and then putting our teams through the NIMS training, which is National Incident Management System. So we've been at work doing that and are now certified in the various trainings that NIMS puts out. And many of you in this room may know, you know, that work was generated out of two big events in this country, September 11th and Hurricane Katrina. So events of a very different nature. And what we realized as a country was that we weren't adequately coordinated. And there's been tremendously positive work that's come out of that learning, and we are the beneficiaries of that training. So this summer, we conducted a tabletop exercise that was led by Margulis and Healy. They are a national consultant specializing in higher ed and really focus on safety and security and regulatory compliance. So they came into the college and they put the team through a tabletop exercise as if it was happening. The goal of the exercises is, what do you already know? What do you need to learn better in order to be actually ready? And that's the kind of work and training we are just going to commit to doing on a regular basis. The emergency management plan more properly just falls under emergency management. So what are we doing to be ready? That emergency management plan has been thoroughly vetted by Pete Gaynor, who directs Rhode Island's Emergency Management Agency. He's been a close partner in this work and will continue to be a close partner with the college. The feedback that he has given us, both about the plan and just the approach we're bringing to this work, is that we are doing excellent job. We're bringing great focus and deliberation to it, and he will continue to offer his advice and counsel. So when we move into November and the end of this year, it will be Pete and his team that will be working with us to bring the kind of training that we want to bring to the entire institution and will continue to make available to the entire community. So, you know, the plan is exactly what it sounds like. It's a big, thick guide to managing critical incidents. Sort of an Alpha to Omega overview of anything that might occur so that we can be ready to respond effectively. And I think the, one of its most important roles that it plays is in fact assigning roles. So assigning roles and responsibilities, outlining communication and outlining the process for making decisions. When I, I've talked about who Margulis and Healy is. We will continue to work with them. They've been a very, I think, effective partner. I've sort of outlined the training that leadership has undergone and will continue to undergo in terms of the entire community. That is going to begin to roll out next month and will continue throughout the year and going forward. When I turn it over to Sean, he's going to walk you through a discussion of how he has been working with his team to make sure everyone is exceptionally well-trained. Final comment I want to make, and Sean will make additional comments in this area, goes back to my original frame, which is this idea of partnerships, this idea of collective impact. You will talk specifically about these acronyms, but we are, we're working really closely with RIPEC, with the state police, with the consultants that I talked about above, and RICUP. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sean. You walk us through some slides, and then we will subsequently move to questions.
Thank you, Professor. Just a little bit about myself, since I am the interim director now, so you can understand who this guy is, where he comes from. I retired from the Warwick Police Department. Most of our officers are retired from police departments throughout the state. And Danny retired from Providence. In Warwick, I had a lot of different responsibilities as I rose up through the ranks. Probably the most success I had in actually doing anything noteworthy other than arresting bad guys was impacting the community through community policing. So as a young sergeant, I was a community police supervisor. Really enjoyed interacting with the community from that perspective as opposed to just a law enforcement role, right? So if you look at this definition that we have up there, it talks about a realization that most of policing, every one of the guys that worked for this department can tell you, most of the policing is 95% not law enforcement related, right? So why aren't we then interacting with the community, partnering with the community in problem solving, to avoid as much of the other 5% as we possibly can? So I think this definition fits great into our philosophy here at the college. We don't solve things through arrest. We want to make things, we want to make our students successful and help them in their college journey as opposed to some type of law enforcement activity. In addition to being a young sergeant in community policing, I was also the commander of the Community Services Division. And that's where I had my first brush with law enforcement in the education field, the three public high schools, the school resource officers, we call them, S.R.R.s. They would come back often at the end of a shift and talk to me about some particular student that they helped out, how they helped them, you know, whether it's trouble studying because of family problems and getting them the right resources, and connecting them with what they needed to become successful in the school environment, working with the school administration. It sounds like a lot like what we do here, right? I know all of our officers are doing that, helping students because like the present, we see it all the time. They're always helping students, whether it's minor things like car issues or students who are really having a difficult time finding the right resources, dealing with advising and counseling, dealing with the dean of students, and helping to make them successful. My other brush with law enforcement in the college setting is I was the Chief of Police in Simmons College in Boston for a little over four years. Residential college in an urban environment is a lot of great experience there. So one of the other things that we do to help interact with the community, and this is something that was started by Dale Wetherall, the current Chief, things such as mental health, for a say, right? This is new in law enforcement. Recognizing that a lot of things that come our way are mental health issues. And there's an eight-hour course that's taught throughout the state of Rhode Island now. It's actually one of my former colleagues, a captain from Warwick, who had a family member who dealt with some severe issues, developed, helped develop this course with mental health professionals in Rhode Island, and travels all over the country now teaching this. And it's, it's an eight-hour course. It's not a PhD-level thing, but it's, it's a recognition of the various aspects of mental health, whether it's autism, or if it's the various psychological issues, and trying to recognize them and not treat it so much from a policing perspective but as a caretaker perspective, right? Again, trying to solve things before they result in arrest. Again, that's all part of the community involvement, that kind of training. One of the things we did last year was introduce, in addition to CPR and AED, is introduce Narcan into our training. Fortunately, unfortunately, we've had several instances where that has come in handy. Again, one of the things that college police does and that other people throughout the college have to do is the campus security authorities for the CLARI report. I'll come back to CLARI in a couple of slides. And you can see on the slide some other trainings that we go through. Title line, we have our title line coordinated here, it was with Canning. That's at the forefront of every college in the country right now. Sexual assault investigations, autism, and the law enforcement response is a huge training for police to recognize the people really on the spectrum and assisting there. The CLARI report, we just, I know you just got your notice, and I know you've all read all 68 pages of the CLARI report. This is the slide everyone usually jumps to without reading the body of the report. Body of the report explains things, the college's policies and responding to emergencies, timely warnings, emergency warnings, emergency management type of things. The statistics page is where everyone goes. So this is a, I forgot to mention this previously. This is designed, the whole CLARI report is designed to be a consumer-read report, right? So the audience for the CLARI report is not just you and me in the college community. It's prospective students, prospective parents of students. So it was designed to be able to look at the statistics on a college and get a feel for the environment there. So you can see from these statistics for the last three years, and it is always a year behind, right? It's always three years, but it, always a year behind. So 2016 is the most recent version. You can see that those numbers, although a few of the categories are very disruptive to people's lives, but you can see that they're very low. And I think you realize that with around 16,000 students on four different campuses, that's, I think that's a testament to the work we do as a college community, not just college police, but, you know, working with advising and counseling, working with the dean of students, working with title line. It's the whole college community working to keep those numbers low. Big project we're working on as far as the college goes is, we're seeking accreditation through, I know that was a bad segue, right? Seeking accreditation through the Rhode Island Police Accreditation Commission. RIPEC came into being around 2012. The Ryan Police Chiefs recognized a lot of departments for accreditation through CLEIA, which is the national organization. And they realized that a lot of states had their own accreditation process and can be tailored to the, just like community policing can be tailored to the state itself, although it does mirror the national standards. So what is accreditation going to do for us? It's going to, the thing thing is, coming from an accredited agency in Warwick, Warwick is one of the first accredited agencies in the state. I get to see, as I rose through the ranks, you don't appreciate it as much when you're at the patrol level, but then you start to realize, it really does facilitate professional excellence, right? So it's, you're constantly reevaluated. You're doing, policies don't just get me, they're stuck on a shelf, just like our emergency management plan. It's a living document. So your policies are constantly updated, changes in the law, changes in technology. You know, years ago, police departments didn't have body cameras, they didn't have pagers. So whenever you, whenever you come up with a new policy or a new technology, you create a robust, well-written policy for it. And everything's updated. It'd kill me to say, as my son is in the police academy, and he just got Warwick's, I think when I retired seven years ago from Warwick, our policy and procedures manual was about 500 pages. He just got it, and it's 800 and some pages long. So you can see as things progress, and years go by in technology, there's a policy, a procedure for everything. But again, that's the professional way to go about it, written policies. One of the most important things about accreditation is, it holds any police agency accountable to you, the community. You get to have a say in how we operate and how we're doing. You get to comment on that in some type of public forum, whether it's a call-in or it's a meeting such as this where people can come hopefully give compliments, but also critique. No organization can exist without constructive criticism and, you know, constantly trying to improve. As it turns out, URI, Rhode Island College, are also going for accreditation. We're going to try and meet them there. Central Dispatch. So right now, we're in Newport. If I ask Robin what the number is to call the campus police in Newport, she could tell me. Somebody coming from Lincoln to Newport may not know the number here, right? So what we're trying to do with Central Dispatch is a couple of things. Just like you call 911 in an emergency in your city, what we want to do is have one number for all four campuses for emergencies, right? So you don't have to remember, I'm flinging it today, but tomorrow I'll teach you in Newport, what do I do, right? You can always call 911. They'll call us, but they'll call our one number for our central dispatch. Or you can hopefully call our one number. Part of the Central Dispatch is we have new equipment coming in, state-of-the-art Motorola equipment where we'll be able to reach out. We can do this now, but it's not as perfect as we need it to be. We'll be able to reach out and contact Danny in Newport from Warwick via radio. So it'll be instantaneous communication once we get a call, right? Same thing with the other campuses. This is the furthest from Warwick. Have to go over the bridge with the radio signal. Not a good one, but it was a little joke. So anyway, Central Dispatch, that's coming. It's going to take several more months to put all that equipment in place. And we'll be communicating that to the community when it happens. But I think it's important to have that one number. So we'll talk about our relationships with other organizations. As Megan was mentioning, when it comes to emergencies, right? People don't exist in a bubble, right? When something big happens, surrounding agencies, whether it's state, city, people will come together and offer support. You come together and work together. There's an adage in emergencies where you don't want to meet the people that are coming to help you during the emergency. You want to have a relationship before that. You want to know people by name, right? So that's what we do. Through RICUPS, it's one of, one of the ways we do that. Every college in the state, whether it's private, public, two-year, four-year, we all get together, we're having a meeting next Tuesday in fact, and all the chiefs, deputy chiefs, senior management get together. And we have guest speakers, topics. We discuss the latest trends, the best practices. So it's an ideal way of constantly progressing and keeping up with the professional standards. Another way we do that is with, through IA CLEIA. It's an international campus law enforcement administrators agency. So you get the feel for everything going on in the world. I know you people do this as well in the college environment. You have faculty that have relationships, memberships throughout the world, throughout the country certainly. So IA CLEIA is a huge resource for us. If you have, if we have a question about anything, it's not left up to us. I see sure I can figure it out. Every day almost in the email chain from IA CLEIA, there's people reaching out, hey, does somebody have a policy on this? We had this come up, how did you handle this? So it's a great resource for us. So it's a great resource for us. We certainly don't operate alone, we operate reaching out for the best practices in, in the entire industry throughout the country and through IA CLEA, really throughout the We also have relationships, obviously, with our local police departments, we have memorands of understanding with the four cities where our campuses lie. And we have a relationship, obviously, with the state police and they're a great resource for training and any other issues. I think I explained most of the acronyms. If you really want an explanation of any other acronyms I didn't cover, I'd be more than happy to stay and talk to you about them.
Oh, I think, thank you, Sean. May I ask to get the lights up? Is that possible? And then let's move to questions and just conversation. Anybody have a question?
Sean, I know that we do have a relationship with local police, but how important are those relationships and how do we interact with Newport PD in particular regarding procedures if something were to happen here? How does that all come about?
Well, one of the goals I have is to, when we do our emergency management training, it's certainly not just going to take place at Warwick, right? Although the first tabletop was there, that's where the administration was. The best practice there is to practice your plan at each of the campuses, right? So the way to do that is to reach out to the local departments and the state police and say, we'd love to exercise this portion of our plan, whether it's an active shooter training, or if it's some type of natural disaster training, hurricane here in Newport, and involve them in the tabletop. We did do that at Warwick, at the tabletop, we had Warwick. So as you know, we've been in discussions, and we'll be discussing tomorrow, me and the boss, about some training that Newport would like to do with us. So that, that is the goal, is to do that training. It doesn't necessarily have to be every year on every campus, but it's, it's important to reach out. It's important to places like Newport that their officers, right? They do this routinely, they've been doing it in South Bay, Regina. So any educational facility like this, or any big facility in the American city, they want their officers to be familiar with the building and they'll walk them through it and it's kind of what they're looking to do with us and get with our officers and do some scenarios and stuff.
And the only addition I would make to that is just what we're asking Sean to do with his team and is to have a campus-specific engagement. So obviously, as the coordinator of this campus, it will be central to that and we would expect, you know, really active conversation about what do you know, what don't you know, how do you get this community to come in the room and actually commit to the learning and the training? So that's, we are rolling that out actively now and we really encourage the community here to get involved.
Thanks for that question. Danny Mossoff.
Hi, Sean. My name is Christine. I'm assistant faculty upstairs here on this campus. And I saw on your PowerPoint slide, right at the top of the list of training, behavioral health, CPR. I've heard a lot about that. I didn't realize you guys had that now in your reserve of, of knowledge. Did you find that training helpful? Is it what you wanted it to be in terms of, you know, I'm thinking that I should have it and others should, it should become, do you think it should become basic for all the system?
It's required down in Rhode Island, is, I can't speak for the whole country, but having just come from being a chief in Massachusetts, the rollout up there was big on autism and people on the spectrum, yeah, all that spectrum is huge, right? And it's being able for law enforcement to recognize people on the spectrum. So here, this mental health first aid training is, from my perspective, it's outstanding. I know Danny's been through it. Every police officer is required to go through it now in the state. And, you know, I look back, I've been doing this for 35 years, I look back to when I was a patrol officer and there was very little training on recognizing people that, you know, they made me where they are, confronting you from a mental health reason and not because they're criminals. And it's important to try and recognize that way. So I think it's fantastic training. For a law enforcement agency to have eight hours of that training is huge.
It's something, something about the way Sean just said that surfaced for me, what I've heard him say at the other campuses, I think it's important. It's not speaking directly to your question. I think as a college, we're very fortunate to have really experienced officers. You know, I think to a person, these are people who have had full careers. You know, when I think about that job, I think you get really good at that job after you've done it for quite some time. And that's what we have here. I, I think that's really important when I go back to that original idea of community policing. That there's just a, you know, I think all of us can go back to whenever we were new at something, you know, you don't have that, I think, that confidence that's born of experience. What I see in our officers is real confidence because it's not their first rodeo. You know, they've been at this work for a long time. I think that's a huge asset of his team.
I just, I had something that you said, Sean. This brings to mind, last week, we got a notice from Bradley Hospital that they're the recipient of a Van Gueren charitable foundation grant, which is Newport-specific, to deliver the mental health first aid classes to community college Rhode Island, Newport campus faculty, staff and students, as well as South Bay, Regina. So I'm working with Sarah and Wright to figure out when to roll that out in the spring, but we'll probably offer it over two days, open it up to all faculty, staff and students so that we can be more of a partner with campus police in recognizing these mental health issues, so.
And I know there's somebody in progress, I was interested, and I simply open up to having one. All training is good training, that's good training.
Well, this is an efficient group who worked through our, our technical opportunities, is what I'll call them, with grace. Any remaining or outstanding questions? So what I'll lead you with is two things. First, I know what busy time here this is, so I genuinely appreciate you all making time to come and listen to this and engage. And second, really ask that you share with your colleagues that this is going to be put up on our website, just as Norm will have it up. And when, Norm, by next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, so by next week. And just encourage your colleagues who weren't able to be here at one of the other campuses to watch. And if anyone has questions that arise from watching those videos, please reach directly out to, out to Sean or to me and, and we'll respond to that. So thank you very much for coming, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.